Welcome everyone to the first Dick's School Committee meeting of fiscal year 15. I'd like to call this meeting to order and do we have any community comments? Moving on, we'll start some, and I'll just, I think we've talked about the agenda, but we have reorganized it a little bit, so we're in a trial period. If anyone has any comments as we move forward, please feel free to pass them along. But our first, or second item would be state of the district, and we'll start with the PTO.
You're wrong.
Well, we're off to a great start. We had a fabulous turnout at the Chickering practical school event. Weather cooperated and it seemed like the parents and all the students really enjoyed the event. We also had a fabulous turnout at the Dover Days Fair. That's kind of our first event where we are trying to connect with the community and we raised a little over $5,000. We actually grossed a little over six, but with the cost, so we're very excited about that. That's a huge achievement. And the CE programs are off immediately. The first one, I think, was like the first week of school.
Plan demand. We've had great feedback on that.
Yeah, and then Mark's going to talk to you just a little bit about what we have planned. We're a non-auction year, we're going to do a few more community building events.
So, we have a sports night, so we're doing a family night out at a BU hockey game. That's coming up in October. We're doing a movie night, which we did last year, which was very successful. We're doing that in January. So, basically, our goal is to bring the community together, you know, the Chickering community, parents, families, teachers, you know. But while doing that, we want to celebrate the dreams and the achievements of the children and work with, you know, what motivates them to learn and, basically, kind of enhance some of our events to that, you know, curriculum-based. So, we are planning a fit and lit event during our fit and lit, during school, so like probably in February sometime. We're still working out when we will have it. We're doing our first ever science fair, so that will be in March. And then the last year's Around the World, which was the international night, the PTO is now taking on a bigger role with that. So, yeah, that's, I've got everything right? So, basically, yeah, all those, working, you know.
So, we are very excited. We have a lot of upcoming plans to integrate to school.
Everyone seems to be motivated, so, you know.
We're going with that, Luride.
Sounds like there's no more off here when there's no auction, you still pile on more activities.
Right, well, it is quieter in some ways, since you know. And the events are a lot of fun, and especially where we have some new ones, the science fair, that should be very exciting. We're looking forward to it. And the fit and lit is definitely a theme that we're trying to incorporate with these events and also still build, you know, have some kind of community, you know, the sense of building with, you know, connecting with the community.
Right.
Thank you so much. The science fair will be terrific.
Can I say our K through 12 science fair?
Wouldn't be great.
Middle school does one.
I think the person spearheading, I talked to her the other night, she's very excited.
That's great. Very excited.
Moving along to, we do have a couple of subcommittees reports. I just wanted to say that the school start time committee is beginning tomorrow, if I understand.
It is.
And Mrs. Vittori is our representative for that, so we will be getting updates in a short.
That's primarily discussion around the middle school, right? Or is it all schools?
It's all schools.
It could be all schools.
Right. And we have built onto the DS website, if you go onto the superintendent's page, there's a landing page there, it's the school start times committee. And there we will have our meeting agendas and we will have, we have a ton of resources there for people to avail themselves of. So, it's a totally open site and we look forward to Mrs. Vittori.
Any homework for tomorrow?
No homework for tomorrow. I have some work for you thereafter.
Need a good breakfast.
That's great.
The wellness committee, I think that met, right? So, update on that.
So, the wellness committee, we also met, and just to refresh everyone's memory just a bit, get the summer cobwebs out, we have sort of, we're taking this three legs to the stool approach with the wellness committee. So, we have policy and protocol, we have dining services is one aspect, and that's the stress and anxiety subgroup. So, the wellness committee under the great leadership of Dr. LaDuke is a large group. Excuse me, so we are really working hard right now to splinter those groups and to make sure people are focused on one of those three prongs of the particular committee. So, we received, right before school opened, we received the advocate report. You'll recall that's the report that was largely DSCF-funded and it provided an overview from all aspects of dining services across our three districts. So, within the next couple of days, that will be posted on the website and available for people to read, for school committee and others, certainly for the wellness committee members to ponder and consider. There are a lot of interesting variables to consider in that report, from finance to, you know, in terms of how we finance our operation, to menu, to marketing, staffing, and physical deployment layout. So, interestingly enough, one of the takeaways from the debriefing with John Ludwig, our consultant, was that of all of our three cafeterias, three kitchens that we run across our school system, actually Pine Hill tends to be, although the smallest in terms of its real estate footprint, it actually is the most efficient in terms of its layout because it's just so compact that everything is interesting. And that was a critique actually of the kitchen at Chickering, was that its sprawling expanse kind of lends to inefficiency. So, there's all kinds of data that we really need to dive into with that report. And then we have the policy, the wellness policy, ready to go before the policy subcommittee. So, whomever is the representative from Dover School Committee to the policy subcommittee will be meeting soon.
That would be.
And aren't you on the evaluation?
Oh, but it's a splinter from the wellness, so I was sort of on each three of these arms.
But I think it'll go to, your policy is coming to our policy.
Eventually, but the working, do you want me to, do you want to sit in on it?
No, no, wellness will do their own.
Yeah, and we're ready for that. I think that the policy is ready to go to policy sub. The implementation guidelines are sort of, you spend all kinds of time.
Well, I think publicly I need to add, I need to put out a job request for full-time babysitter, Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:00 to 4:00.
As long as you don't ask me to put on payroll, I'm all set.
I will not bill it back to the school.
So, that's really exciting with the wellness committee from policy and protocol, dining services, and then of course, this Friday morning, distress and anxiety subgroup actually leave for Stanford, for Stanford University. So, they leave Friday, come back early next week, and the Chickering representative to that group of 10 is Cynthia Shapiro, who will be traveling representing Chickering. So, there's a lot going on with that committee, and thank you Karen for your good work, and it's a large group.
You too, Superintendent Shapiro.
It's fun, we just have to showcase also the snack shack that opened on the regional campus. It's really quite a hoot, and it was delivered right before school opened, and it opens, it was a DSCF grant, and it's really quite something. It opens after school and kids are able to go and get a healthy snack before.
Do you have a Linkwes comments?
It's, yeah, it's right outside of Linkwes comments, so it's a big custom shed, cedar sided shed. It's a total legit shed.
Is that just a closet that gets a little sign?
No.
Oh, sorry. This is a little closet with a little sign.
No, we had great funds, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony and the whole shabazz. So, we have student managers that are completely running it, so it's a really non-adult enterprise. So, it's pretty popular.
Great, good. And the last committee I was going to give an update on was the capital subcommittee, and that includes Adrian and myself, I was hoping Adrian would be here, but he's running late. So, the one piece that we wanted to bring forward in this part of the report is a pilot that we're investigating right now, and it has to do with the heat issue here at Chickering. So, we met three times this summer, and Adrian did a lot of background research going back to when the last heat task force was around, like in 2006 or '08. And went through all the reports that we had and found one recommendation that had not been fully taken through the system. So, this summer we met and we said, okay, let's do this. Let's see if our, first of all, if our system can track the temperatures in the classrooms, both first floor and second floor. We started that the first day, first day the teachers reported, so August 25th, I believe, at least. And we're, so daily we're capturing those temperatures. In October, we'll bring forward a report to sort of show you where the temperatures lie, and then we'll probably ask for school committee to support a pilot of, so the one recommendation that Adrian found that he hadn't explored was to bring the ceiling fans down to a lower level and make them bidirectional, in hopes that, because right now the fans are so high up, all it does is push the hot air down. By bringing them down a little bit lower and going the other way, we're hoping that it raises the heat up a little bit. So, we will try to pilot that in two selected classrooms. My thought is that we would probably have them installed during, if it works, April break, and then they would be there for the, you know, the May and June of that, and we can track temperatures and see if we see some impact. But just as the middle school did for their air conditioning initiative, we just need to start keeping the data and see where we stand, because when we did this before, Chickering just did not have enough hot days to make it economically sensible to do something. So, we'll see if that's changed and how the fans may work, but that's something on our agenda for this year.
How's it being funded?
It would, we'd come from our operating budget. The fans are, Ralph already got us, estimates like $700, so it'd be $1,400 initiative. So, we would just do that from operating and then see where it goes.
So, the fan has sort of the motor, as we quoted this particular device out, and it will literally hover at 10 feet above floor level, level of floor, and again, it's done, it's, you know, bidirectional, so the hope is that it'll help that. Received today the first Excel spreadsheet because the good team at Chickering just wanted to make sure that the data is being collected the way that we need for it to be ultimately recorded. So, I saw some data on 15 classrooms very late this afternoon, and in fact, it's, what we have is a high and a low in every classroom every day, and so we're showing the high, the high, the low, and the average room temperature in every classroom that's not air-conditioned.
Unfortunately, it was very hot the first couple of weeks of school, so we actually had some helpful data.
But every room is already wired with fans, this is replacing the fan that's there?
Right, so the thinking on this was to identify two classrooms to do the fan pilot so that we can see if there's a blip at all in terms of the data tracking, you know.
So, is one fan per classroom going to be sufficient, do you think, or do you want to do like one in one and two in the other?
Well, right now, I think because every classroom has a fan, so we have the wiring and everything there, so I think we'll start with the one and see if we have any kind of... The middle school did this, and I don't think they got the best data, but we're a little bit, our building's a little bit different, so we can't take their data and say it's what's going to happen here. So, I don't think we want to go crazy if we want to start and see.
To one each.
Yeah, and we'll see what the temperatures are when we, you know, we'll have end of August, September, and almost all of October, so I think it's been cool since then, but we'll have, you know, a chunk of data to look at.
Just to put my arms around relative scope, cost scope, so there's 40 classrooms, 700, so less than $40,000 if we, if this went through and we were to do fans, we're talking about a less than $40,000 initiative. Just roughly, what's an air conditioning initiative?
An air conditioning initiative for this building, so it's interesting, the duct work that was installed in Chickering when the building was built will be able, it would work, should we move in the direction of air conditioning this building. It would be in the ballpark of probably $800,000, so to air condition the building, something in that in the ballpark.
Well, we're spending $1,400,000. When we did this before, actually, the cost was more like a million dollars, and I didn't think our duct work was the right.
Yeah, actually, I had a conversation with Ralph today about that, and he thinks that the duct work would be sufficient, it's just that the equipment on the other end would have to be sort of retrofitted because the duct work, this was like 12-inch duct work and we have 10, so it's in the building.
Yeah, but it's, you know, that's just trying to change.
You really should do, if you want to go to that next step of feasibility study.
Well, I think that's where by collecting the data, we'll see if it's, there's enough days where it would be beneficial, so that's what we're starting now. Any other subcommittees I missed that have met? Okay, perfect. The Chickering school update.
In terms of enrollment, we have, would you like me to address just the enrollment piece?
So, on this particular structure, we were just going to do a very quick kind of auction, but enrollment would be a great topic.
Okay. For enrollment, we have 50 home students in kindergarten, and as you know, we went down one section of kindergarten this year from four to three. In grade one, we have 66 students with three new students, and my understanding is that historically, we had more students coming into first grade, but now that we have full-day kindergarten, I think that's had an impact, and we have fewer people transitioning in at that grade level. And we have a total of 472 students, down as predicted from last year with those adjustments. Is there any other information that you'd like to know about enrollment?
So, just for the committee, you know, we graduated a class of 96, fifth graders, and as Principal Dialo alluded to, we only had two new first graders who came into the school this year. I think was actually toward the number that we saw transfer in, because we monitored that over the past few years, so it's interesting, when Dover School Committee began asking for this in 2011, we had a number of students that was pre-full-day K, so we've just seen that number just completely evaporate over time, literally. So, this year was the most dramatic in kindergarten. And just as a reminder, our budget for Dover for Chickering School was built on a 482 number, so we opened at 472.
Can you remind me, there are three first grades?
Three first grades.
No, four first.
No, four, because kindergarten is three.
Kindergarten is our first one. And then four.
Third grade went down five sections this year.
And then there's five and five still in grades four and five, right? Grades four and five are still five sections.
Can I, so is this where, okay, just because this is new. So, if there's any questions on the board's report, is that, do we do it now?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, I had a question, just a small one. The new schedule looks very, very interesting. I just was wondering for point of clarification, is science staying the same?
That's the same. There are many elements that.
For grades three, four, and five, where they're going to a teacher for the space unit and the batteries and bulbs unit?
Yes.
So, that's still all at the same time?
That's right, that's not changed.
Third grade has science.
They simply didn't specifically block that out as a common time, so teachers have the flexibility of choosing when to have that and how they're going to, how they're going to share the classes, but yes, that has remained the same.
And there's still, I'm just knowing how sometimes when things aren't locked out, they sometimes fade away, that's still like, that's such a strong, strong program, that's still committed to, we do it X number of times a week and...
That's the white areas on form. Right, yeah, that's also a time when teachers will decide to put in their open circle curriculum and, you know, those sorts of things. So, no teacher wants to have their entire day locked out from minute to minute, and we had the most flexibility in those areas. We're also, as a school, doing more integration of social studies and science with the writing curriculum, so there's new opportunities there to integrate, but it's absolutely still there.
Okay, and well, actually, that is part of our goal, focus points, talking about the master schedule.
So, don't go into that.
Yeah, if you have other questions, but we'll save that for that.
I had a question. First of all, I loved the report, I thought the depth was just really important to, for us as a community to understand. In the area of curriculum and learning, where there's a reference, I think this is the area where you're describing how there used to be curricular team leaders by content area, and that that's been reorganized to be more across grade, so I presume that means all content area within a collection of grades, so stop me where I'm going wrong, K and one, two and three, four and five. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit, just so that we can be real comfortable that the specifics within a content area, take, you know, a math standard has moved from second grade down to first grade, how that gets picked up in this organizational chart, if you will?
Sure. The major shifts and adjustments in curriculum determined by the Common Core being brought in were already made. It is certainly something that we refer back to on a regular basis, so when we are creating or integrating units of study, the Common Core is always our guide. So, that is, I would say, embedded in all of our practices.
And it's stable now, so it's kind of work we've done, and now we're at a stable point as far as knowing where the, you know, having a handle where the standards are by grade.
I would say that there's a broader understanding of what it needs to be, so we no longer need a specific person designated to guide that whole process of looking at it and deciding how to integrate it. It's more of a shared responsibility now, but we were very fortunate to have that position of the curriculum leaders, so we reassign them to do the work of launching professional learning communities. And I'm really pleased with how that has worked so far. We've had extensive training in the summer, and they are just in this wholeheartedly, and we've had our first meetings with the professional learning communities, and I think we're going to have some incredible results by the end of the year. So, I think it's been a significant shift in how we use those people, and I think it's just a direct match with what we need as a school right now.
Can you just, let us, who are the team chairs, if you will, of those content, of those grade levels?
Connie Dawson, speech pathologist, working with kindergarten first grade. We have Jane Gentile, working with grades two and three, and we have Donna Power, working with grades four and five. Cheryl Chase is working across all the grades.
Any other questions for our line? Okay, so now we move to central office.
Sure, thank you very much, Mrs. Vittori. And we'd like to welcome our new Dover warrant liaisons, Kate Canning and Doug Lawrence. Welcome. Certainly want to make sure they're welcome to our fold here. In the report, I just wanted to bring your attention and thank Mrs. Vittori for attending the opening session when we opened school this year, and to really just do a shout-out, if you will, to, Chickering was very well represented in the unsung hero award category this year. That's a new tradition we started last year where administrators nominate a particular person who fits the criteria of an unsung hero for the previous school year. So, Mary Lou Northgrave is an educational assistant here at Chickering, was recognized, Andrea Welch, teacher here, Onique Marshall-Beal, our system-wide MECO director, and Stephanie Mecu, who runs our kitchen here at Chickering. So, very solid representation from Team Chickering, so we wanted to make sure we recognize them. We'll speak to evaluation work in a bit. We included in your package personnel changes, we had quite a number of moves, a lot of moving and shaking that went on, opening the school year.
How does that stand from previous years? From reading it for the first time? It's a lot.
So, last year we had 53 staff changes, system-wide, and this year we had about 48 when the dust finally settled. So, that's, that's pretty significant. So, we employed in total about 338 people, system-wide. It's a pretty significant change. That could be something as minor as, you know. At the region, we moved from teaching at the middle school, teaching at the high school, teaching in the middle school, to teaching at both the middle school and the high school. So, that's all, that's kind of a fully loaded model. It's not like.
So, things like that affects obviously the change for individuals that are affected, but they keep the knowledge of the school system. In terms of people that have left the, you know, the whole school system or came into the school system, what was that number then?
I'd have to do the math for you. I'd say it's probably about half that.
I was thinking inconsistency.
Yeah, probably about, probably about 2022, I would say something in that neighborhood, and those were predominantly a lot of educational assistants. So, there's really, there wasn't a lot of...
The act looks like, right?
Didn't that replace?
Probably.
So, for distribution.
You know, and I would say, while on the one hand, it's good, you want consistency in your staffing, that's also, it's very good for any organization to have new people coming in, and it's certainly not as significant, particularly if you look at people who are brand-new, it's not that significant.
It's amazing when you sort, when you look at some of the folks at Chickering who do such a good job of bringing in new professionals in the building, it's not just the admin team, but it's the DSCA reps, it's the whole, the whole model that does such a great job of sort of indoctrinating people into Chickering, and it's really a credit to the whole, the whole group, that people feel incredibly welcomed, warmed, warmly welcomed, and just quite participatory at times, so. We're also looking forward to providing in October the entirely new enrollment report format. It's really, we're fine-tuning it even as we speak, there have been multiple iterations of it, but it monitors migration of our students from a graduating class perspective over multiple years. So, there are formulas embedded in the spreadsheet that literally monitor as, say, the class of 2012 or '10, or our kindergarten class of 2027, as they, as the classes move through the system. So, we actually back you up to 2011, and you're actually able to see as a class, say, a fifth grade became sixth, sixth became seventh, seventh became eighth, so you can see quite discernibly where there are entrances and exits, where some of those trends lie. And we think and hope that it's a better tool in terms of understanding some of the migration that occurs within our student population, but also being able to bake into our budget models a realistic net migration figure, as we call it, as students move through the system. So, we're really anxious to share that with you in October. Those are really my highlights, if there are questions.
I want to say, I thought the whole idea, and we were in the building the day you were doing it, the whole idea of taking the new, all the new faculty on the tour was the Dover Sherborne bus tour. I said, what a great, what a great idea, and I think, you know, just what a nice way to really set a tone for faculty coming in to really feel like, there's so much, that's a bulk stuff you get at those first meetings, you know, make it also a sense of community and welcome to our little town, and here's where you can get coffee.
People just thinking system-wide, that we're a school system, you know? It's like, it's really easy to pull people over to a region and you sort of do your, do whatever you do at the region, and then, but it's really important to showcase Chickering and Pine Hill, and you're part of the system, and these are all our kids, and we loved it, the DS reality bus tour. Karen, thank you so much. We handed out the gramamine at the door, and we had a lot of fun. It was fun, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. I needed the gramamine, no. It was facilitated by Kelly Egan, who's the foreign language curriculum leader at the middle school, and she just is a bundle of energy. So, you could see the list of new hires for Chickering, but to have welcomed those individuals with a welcoming breakfast, with each administrator personally introducing all of those new educators and those mentors who could be part of it with them. And then, you know, Steve gave a welcome to everybody. Kelly spent some time thinking about what is the mentoring relationship, a little technology on the side, and then the DS reality tour. Steve did a small tour of the region. Kelly narrated as we went along the streets and byways of Dover Sherborne, pointing out points of interest.
I was going to say.
As a thought of a member of the school committee.
I know, but I do that.
The educators were so thrilled to be at Chickering. One of the mentors said, oh, I don't think I've been here in years. So, I took some pictures and I'm in the process of making it into a video clip that I'm going to post to our website, because it was just great to be in the foyer of Chickering as, as people discover what Chickering is like, so that was really cool. It was very well done. It was very well done. I really, I really thank Kelly for her organization and for the district for hosting the luncheon, and that's where we heard most of the comments about educators feeling so, as though they were such professionals, so it was very.
It was nice, nicely done. Karen?
Thank you. So, that's what I was going to add, so if there's anything else about my report, I will talk to professional development later on.
Okay, any other questions? Welcome, welcome to the committee.
Thank you, it's nice to be here. Things are moving faster here, slowly with the changes and the reorganization, and things are going very smoothly thanks to the help of a lot of people. The administrators in each of the buildings have been so patient as I kind of get up to speed with each of the buildings and the students. as I kind of get up to speed with each of the buildings and the students. And Laura and Deb, and of course, Marla Colerus, they have been unbelievably helpful to me in that way. Things are going very well. Marla's really stepping into things at Pine Hill and getting used to the staff there and getting up to speed there. And I'll fill you in about a little bit later in this around what our goals are, what we're looking towards in this whole reorganization.
Great. Thank you. Chris, trying to figure out how this works. I think, I think we'd almost get rid of that and just fold it into the.
I think we could tweak it.
Yeah.
For sure.
Well, as far as the year of June, ending June 30th, 2014, we ended the year with a favorable variance of about $89,000 for regular in-district education, of which that represents about 1.3% of the total budget. So it's not really a lot of money. This variance is.
Better than the other way.
Yeah, right. The variance is comprised of $75,000 in salary and $13,000 in expenses. So I think that tells the story of how we whittled down some of the expense categories. The bad news is the other district was about $191,000 over budget in the sense that we had to hit the circuit breakup for $191,000. The majority of that was attributable to regional other district placements. Thank God we had that. And we had 29, we budgeted 29 other district students, and we ended up with 35 altogether. And again, that number fluctuates throughout the course of the year. I'm not going to explain every variance. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I've attached, for the first time, a reconciliation of the, what we've spent the money on major maintenance. This has been something that the capital committee has requested, as well as school committee.
Yeah, warrant, at least because it's.
Warrant, yeah. For the new people, new members to the committee, over the, over the last couple of years, they've been adding money to the major maintenance category that we deem not to be capital in nature. Some, most of it's, some of its emergency, some of its actual maintenance that's been scheduled.
But it's not in the operating budget.
No, it isn't.
This isn't operating, right. So this is, so it's this one.
I guess that's for.
We started out with like 25.
So it rolls.
No, no, no. So what we, they've been giving us more money so that we can take care of more things within the operating budget and take less to have to deal with for the capital. So.
It's really not capital. They're under the threshold.
Right. And the type of work it is, like we, we had a little, like four years ago, we weren't quite clear.
Right. So, and I've also enclosed a list of all the capital projects, an update on where we start with it. Annual Town Meeting, 14 capital projects. I have to tell you, there was a significant amount of projects across the three districts that it's getting to a point where it's almost becoming impossible to get it done in the eight-week window, especially as some of these projects require a public bid process. So we need to be cautious in that. The revolving funds, the report on the revolving funds, the food service account revolving fund, I've attached a copy of the revenue and expenses. They actually ended the year with a deficit. And the primary reason for that, though, was not because of utilization. It was, we had an individual that was out on a long-term leave. And there's not many people in, in that food service group. So we had to call in ourselves. And that's the primary reason. Otherwise, we would have probably had to come to the school committee and ask for some kind of rate increase or examination of.
If it was a real.
Yeah.
Right.
As far as the building rental, we have.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
When you, when it refers, it says charged off to facilities, is, is that the revolving fund?
No, but it's coming to our operating budget. Because that's what I.
Yeah, the town of, the town cannot close the year in a deficit. That, when they do the free cash calculation for the town, they would make them charge that against the general fund. Because in effect, it's netting out against their free cash number, so to speak, or our variance that was surplus.
Okay.
So we work with the town accountant and recommend where to charge that.
So at the end of the year, that $6,000 was thrown into the operating budget, which threw a variance, an unfavorable variance in there.
Correct. And you should theoretically start the year with zero as your deficit.
We are now.
Yes. Dover building use, the balance forward was $48,000. Revenue was of $12,000 a year. I think that's more realistic of what we get annually, the $12,000. We expended $15,748, and that was per school committee for security enhancements. So in this particular year, you had an, an operating deficit. However, because you had a balance forward, and we have an encumbrance out there. And I think it's important that when the townspeople try to reconcile our numbers against the towns, but record-keeping, they don't, the towns do not encumber funds. So it doesn't show up as expended until it's actually paid for. But yet, it's, it's already been obligated, and that's critical. So we're ending the year with a $35,052 fund balance. The question was posed, and something I learned recently, unlike the region, when we have overtime associated with building rental, that isn't being charged to the building rental. However, it doesn't happen very frequently. And if the school committee would want, would like us to do that, we can just set that up. I didn't realize that was not.
So make that part of the, make that part of the rental.
We're charging, but it's not leaving the bill, the revenues, the fees all go into the building funds.
Right.
We're not taking out the building fund and putting it against our operating where the overtime.
Where the overtime was accrued.
Yeah.
So a good example of that would be like the auction. For instance, if Dover PTO has an auction, we incur overtime expense during the time of the auction. Those revenues flow into this account. The expenses are charged against the custodial overtime in the operating budget. It's, it's not matching revenues and expenses in the same account, but.
But it's still maybe it's being used for the building. So I think for the materiality, I think it's clear, it's just important for people to.
To know that.
Right. I think that the materiality of the bookkeeping would just waste all of our money.
Right.
Right.
It's not like this is a huge.
Not like the.
No. But I would say, this is really significant. What's with all that overtime?
We're lucky if we probably have $1,000 related to this type of thing.
If you, if you rent the gym on the weekends, it's a three-hour minimum that you pay the custodian. So that's about $120. So that's, so on the weeknights, there's no custodian charge because they're here. But if you rent the gym on the weekends, like.
Which happens.
Right. Because I know that, because I had to pay the girls across when we rented. So I know that's how the check was made out, whether it all went to the town of Dover. It's a minimum, it maybe might be four hours.
No, it's three.
Three, yeah, yeah. It's like 40 or 45.
And we also have a proposal coming forward for.
In October for the rates.
So.
We'll charge more than that.
The last one is the donation account. And we split, we actually account for that in two separate, what, in two separate funds. One fund, but two separate lines. Spent gifts because typically that's what the donations had been. And then other. There was actually a negative balance forward of $2,568 because, in effect, we had a receivable hanging out there for, for, from DSCF, for something we had advanced because they had to get a purchase order for a particular, the executive.
I think the training actually happened before the.
Yes, exactly. So we had the receivable, so it wasn't a true deficit. And we showed the town count on that. We expended $5,496 for iPads, and we have a balance of $975. The other gift account, we had a balance of $18,808. We actually received two donations of $5,500. So the total would be, the total revenue is 24, the total balance would be $24,308. And the school committee voted $5,000 on that to go for paving. So the balance remaining is $19,308. And as I've stated before, most of that is previous B.C.
Before Christine.
B.C.
You know, maybe of going back and peeling the onion and figuring out if it was expressly supposed to be used for something.
I don't, well.
Short of, short of school committee meeting minutes.
Yeah. But I can tell you this, I'm almost positive because I've seen it happen, not just here, but other districts I've worked. It's hit the general fund.
Right.
We've really tightened up that. Like every time there's a donation, it's sent directly to Heidi, who makes sure she books that. So we didn't have that oversight before. So I think we tightened up as a result of this issue.
So what happens now, so if we have a donation, and we do tonight, and then I'll just donation, right, literally tomorrow morning, I would email Heidi Perkins, the system business manager, let her know there was an acceptance. She then immediately looks as soon as your minutes are available. And it's all put together as a package. So it's literally, there was an accepted donation, here's what it was for, and there's a strict accounting around it.
And if there's a restricted gift, it's noted, otherwise.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's the good news of that.
I have a couple of questions. One relating back to the fee, just to reconfirm. The, the revenue line is, does not include outstanding balances left over from June 30th?
The liability, no. Those, I mean, if someone prepays, is that what you're referring to?
Right. So if I put $100 in on June 15th, and I still have $80 left at the end of the year, that $80 is not in your revenue line.
That's correct.
Because as I understand, you don't do that during the year. But at the end of the year, we make an adjustment for the outstanding, for the cash that's still sitting in people's accounts.
Correct.
Okay. And the second is just, I guess, thinking about the controls of these revolving accounts. We vote to put the money in. We, there's no requirement to vote to spend the money, which is, I know now we're looking at it, which is really.
Right. So we just.
At least we're looking at it.
What we're proposing is, and that was brought up through the chair in a sidebar conversation pre-meeting tonight, the decision was, or we're hoping, that what we would do is disclose, literally, like if the administration would like to move forward and do X, Y, and Z with said funds, and here's where it comes from, and it was an unrestricted fund, and be able to move forward in that way. So there's a, it's coming in and it's going out, and there's a clear paper trail around that. We weren't necessarily seeking a vote around it necessarily, unless that's something the school committee wants.
But from an accounting, financial perspective, the revolving fund is specifically set up when, when the school committee in Town Meeting set up that revolving fund, who knows how long ago. It had to be specifically stated for what purpose donations have to go into donations account. Now, the restriction is when the person donates. Other than that, it's unrestricted.
So does that mean it's, it's, it's available until it's, it's not, like the sped account, that kind of makes, it's a little easier to get your head around because the special ed department would say, we need iPads, we have $1,000, let's buy some more. And it's kind of like it's their money, so it would make sense that they would determine what to do with it. And so then the general money, like there's $20,000. Do we not have any oversight over that? I mean, I'm.
Well, I mean, we definitely moving forward this team.
Yeah, we.
To be able to, would love to have a conversation and dialogue around what we would like to. So it's not moving forward, it's not as if, oh, you know, it's captured in some report that we spent $5,600 on X, Y, and Z. We would preemptively come before the school committee and say, this is our plan. We have $10,000 earmarked for special education, and this is what the team at Chikering would like to do with that $10,000.
Yeah.
Like, take, take the $500 alliance energy. We get that every year.
Right.
You know, it's not a lot of money, but at some point, that could build up. And I, I think superintendent's right. We would come before school committee and say, we'd like to purchase, because there's no restriction on it.
Right. But now that we know all these accounts, like the building fund, once it came sort of our attention, I think we brought it forward to our attention when we had some security enhancements we needed to take care of immediately. I feel like it's ways, money that, you know, when things come up, we could even say, we want to do this, but let's pull it from the gift fund or help.
But we wouldn't technically vote on, I mean, I'm not trying to cast doubt. I have full faith in your ability and Laura's ability. But, you know, you are not necessarily going to be here forever. So I was thinking, yeah, I think.
The generic school committee, the generic principal, the generic superintendent, if the generic superintendent and principal said, let's spend $10,000 on something that the school committee thinks that makes no sense at all, that they could still do it though, right?
Under your scenario, they probably, I mean, they could.
They could. I mean, it'd be so foolish to do that. I mean, Chris would rather have a conversation around it.
Well, but, but you get what I'm saying.
I do.
I mean, it's something Steve's saying as a courtesy, would give you a heads up, but that might not be the same philosophy as someone else who's sitting in the same seat.
Because the intent of a revolving fund, and I think you have to go back to that, the intent of a revolving fund is usually specific, specifically for a purpose, like building use.
Right.
Right. Which, which is where, right. Which is where, as I said, like special ed sort of, that makes sense. This is the special ed gift money. The special ed department says, this is what we're going to do for special ed. The general one, and again, as I said, I really am not trying to, I have full faith, but I think as, you always have to make your policy to meet the lowest common denominator and not.
Yeah.
The highest multiple.
No, I'm not going to be personally.
Yeah, you could, you could have a policy that dictates that, right?
Well, and the other part of it is that, I mean, I think that the, you know, in school committee, when you look at your jurisdiction, right?
Right.
And sort of fiduciary responsibility you have over fund governance globally.
Right.
I get that. I mean, I totally appreciate that. And that's one of the areas that's sacrosanct to a school committee. So I see your point.
I think tying it back to the way we have to sign warrants.
Yeah.
That because this is an account that we're signing, that we're approving the expenditure, I think just like we, we, you can tie it back to a vote that we accepted it, I think you ought to be able to tie it back to a vote that you accept, that you approved the expenditure, and that the rest of the general fund, we can tie it back to a budget that we have brought forth to Town Meeting. But I think it kind of closes the loop on all expenditures coming out of the, unless you want to put this into a budget. And then, once a year, we approve a plan that you have to spend the money. And as long as you're, you know what I'm saying? So I just, I think.
Because you don't really even know how much you're going to get over this.
Right. Realize, I think that it's not as easy as just, you know, having.
That'll be fine.
And that you can find it in the minutes, and it's nice and tidy.
It's very tight, and it sort of does close a little bit. I mean, the, the committee is so remarkably collaborative. I know that if we brought something forward, it was important to us.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But as I said, I think you have to always plan for.
It's kind of like voting on the nurse.
Kind of.
Right.
By the way, I should go to you.
But I do think, to me, that makes sense because I would have liked to have heads up about the iPad being purchased because of how much time we put into our overall technology.
Yeah.
And to have that sort of come and we not know about it was a little, you know, I was like, what the heck was going on?
Yeah. Well, that, and you know, the, the good news of that, Dawn, is that that got totally captured in the tech plant supplement.
Oh, no, absolutely. Right. But we spent so much time on that. That's, I think that's what raised the flag. We started thinking about this a little.
Yeah, we discussed that.
Yeah. So that probably means that we have a self-committee policy, just to write up something. And we can see, you know, about what, how we.
Well, theoretically, you can just take a vote. Moving forward.
Should we make a motion, Laura? Just, and we vote?
And then just be in the minutes there? We should go, okay. Okay. Is that official? Okay, is that out of motion? Should we, I will.
We have to craft it.
Okay, let me think for a second. So I move that, do we want to have like a minimum at which point we care, or we want to just say? So I move that.
Expenditures.
Expenditures from all the revolving?
No, no.
No, 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 just the donation, just the general donation.
You wouldn't be able to pay any bills from.
No, not, not, well, not the lunch.
Right, not food services.
Yeah, sorry.
Not food services.
Gift accounts.
Well, so it's the building and the gifts.
Yes.
From the building accounts and the.
Gifts.
The gift accounts.
Right.
That expenditures will be brought before the, before the school committee to be approved.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what I move. Any discussion on that? Okay. Is that all in favor?
All right.
Okay, perfect.
And that's my report.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Extremely, extremely clear. And I will say, thank you so much for all the work on the revolving fund, because I know it's just so helpful for us to have, to see what the ins and outs are, and it was perfect.
Well, I have to thank my staff too, because they helped.
Well, thank you. It was much appreciated.
Chris, just hang around while we, until we get through the fiscal 16 count.
Okay. Can we do that next?
It keeps on going.
It is.
It is next.
Okay. I, if you're gonna, oh, you don't have your screen, don't worry.
Here, I'll try to zoom them up, but yeah, make it all squiggly.
So just to give you an update, so the, the capital budget calendar is, is pretty early in the season. We have to turn in our projections for fiscal, our placeholders for fiscal year 16 by October 15. So tonight, we're going to, at a, sort of a high level, approve placeholders in October. So tonight, we're going to, um, at a, sort of a high level, approve placeholders in October. Um, we will look at this again, and then at the time when we meet in October, we will have estimates. So we'll have support for all of them, so the numbers may change slightly. But by looking at it and approving it tonight, it allows us to have something that's approved to send to the town to meet their deadlines. And they know that we may tweak it, and that we will send updated numbers after our October twenty eighth meeting. And then we go before capital, I believe in November, and then we'll make any final decisions about capital at our December meeting. So we are all wrapped up with capital by the end of the year, if not sooner.
So we call this year, sorry.
So we're in fiscal year fifteen right now. So now we're looking at fiscal, yeah, we never live in a current year, we always live in a...
Pretty soon.
On one day.
Well, you never know what year we're in. So in the packet that's going to the town, you will notice the first sheet is where we stand with all of our outstanding things that have already been approved at town meeting. So, um, so we go back, there's some two thousand thirteen, I think that all have been closed. And then you have the progress of where we are with the two thousand fourteen. The only one I sort of want to comment on is that the EMS major upgrade. As Ralph was going through, you know, looking at getting that job started, he was sort of approached by the vendor saying, "You know what? There might be a better option for you, for your, um, for this system. So we're doing some more research on that, and it may end up being a project that we sort of do jointly with the region, and potentially even Pine Hill. So we might have one platform that will be able to monitor all of our EMS systems." So that is a work in progress right now. So that sort of money is sort of how, as Laura mentioned in her report, until Ralph continues this process. So I think it actually was really good, because we could have just spent this money and not been any further ahead. Because this is going to give plant facilities, like on his phone, at home, wherever, complete control over all the systems for the district. So it would be a huge improvement if we can get this to work. So that will be, more information coming on that. Were there any other questions on any of the other current open projects? Okay. And then as to that, Adrian, because Adrian, like I said, we met a couple times this summer, and so it was nice to have a, a self-committee. If you wanted to, do you want to go over that?
And actually, just as a precursor, so in your packet, I think immediately preceding, you have your budget calendar. You know, that's, so as Don sort of alluded to here, you have everything. This took us a while to kind of craft this over the summer, so hopefully this, you know, because...
Seventeen, seventeen versions.
The summer, yeah. It's the color form. Okay.
I'm going to hit this one.
Oh, you know, this is, I think it's updated, I mean, you probably...
Oh, you can, well, all right, thank you.
So, um...
I think on the updating.
No, you have the update that she got.
I have the old one.
Oh, that's what I thought. But I'm not finding it on the website, and I'm looking at it.
Page twenty-five is what it shows.
The same page, up this one, sorry.
Page twenty-five is...
Oh, it's, this is just on, it's on, okay, sorry.
So on the, uh, the actual detail for the ask, as it were, for fiscal year sixteen, the top section appearing in yellow details floor scrubber, the gym curtain divider, a placeholder for security enhancements in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, which we'll go into executive session tonight to discuss, as that can be discussed and should be in executive session. There is a domestic hot water placement for fourteen thousand dollars. And this is actually to put in a new system, it's an electric on-demand system. And we footnote it down below, it says, "The acquisition of this on-demand electric system for fourteen thousand dollars in fiscal year sixteen replaces a fifty-two, almost fifty-three thousand dollar placeholder in fiscal year nineteen in the onsite insight report, calling for the replacement of the domestic hot water system." So this is an, it's an on-demand system. We use very little hot water on this campus. And the, so the, the engineers have indicated to Ralph that the system would be more than sufficient. So we'd like to move forward with that, as it's optimally, it's more efficient in terms of its, just, it's, not only its implementation, but it's, uh, it's use moving forward. And therefore, we've removed that fifty-three thousand dollar placeholder for fiscal, in the out year of this FY nineteen.
Right.
Which was nice. And then the HVUs, the heating ventilation units, there are six units here on this, on this campus, the six units, one, two, three, four, five, six. And as Business Manager Tag alluded to, we actually lost one of the units this year, resulted in almost a ten thousand dollar expenditure to the extraordinary maintenance line. So there are six units, one has now been replaced, the building is aging, and we suggest putting the placeholder as called for. The act, the actual model of fiscal sixteen of sixteen nine ninety-five is taken from the fiscal fifteen line in the onsite insight report, and it's baked into this model. And we have almost the same placeholder for a similar construct in fiscal year seventeen, in the amount of seventeen five oh five. So that puts our ask for capital at just north of a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand three oh seven. And then down below, we have those standard items that are very well described in the onsite insight report, but that are at this point those that we have historically now paid for through that, the maintenance account. Yeah, so they're things that we just on a go-for basis, some of them are so low in materiality monetarily. And we've had discussion about the cedar siding, exterior brick masonry. And again, some of these items, you know, as Ralph goes through, they may not necessarily need to be done, so we've extracted the numbers from the onsite insight report. But certainly, he exercises due diligence in making sure that these things need to be done. Like, do we really need forty-five hundred dollars down in brick masonry work? Time will tell, you know? If we were to have to get an estimate on that at this moment, we could be north or south of that by some amount of money.
So that was the reconciliation that Chris did. So it took what we said was operating last year and showed what we did and what we didn't do, which I think is just good for us to get a feel, this is the first year, not the first year, second year now that we've sort of done this. So it's more of a guide, I think that's what's important. We're not saying this is what we're going to do. This is what the report said, you may be ready to do this. So it's, it, it just alerts plant facilities that they should take a look.
Yeah.
We may or might not have to do it. So, um, that seems to be working really well.
Yeah.
Good.
And I'm just going to say, before we send this to the town, one thing we need to do is, they're supposed to be ranked by priority. So we'll actually, number one will actually not be number one, because it got moved to two thousand seventeen.
Sure.
But just looking at, I know the hot water heater should probably be our number one, because that's, could potentially be an emergency this year.
Yep.
So we might just want to tweak that a little bit before we send it to...
Sure.
To the town.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything that makes any more, you know, sense. I mean, there's nothing that's more higher priority than not, except for the hot water, sorry. But that, that's part of the protocol, is to rank those, as the numbers are first.
Yeah, no, that's good.
True.
So that's where we stand now, and the town has our, the capital budget has also asked us to extend the five years out to fifteen years. So you'll notice there was a schedule in here. Last year, we had one that took the whole insight onsite report into five-year increments. So what we did here was break it up into three years, where it's sort of nicely divided. And so from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three, in each of those years, we have an average of two hundred thousand dollars of capital needs. A lot of that's starting to be like the classroom floors and that kind of stuff. So it's not any big projects, it's just lots of little stuff, because that's the time where we start replacing some of that. When you get into twenty-four and twenty-six, those three years, that's where we get hit with a really big capital. We have the roof, two boilers, and a replacement of all the windows. Again, we don't exactly know what year that's going to be, so it's sort of a gap, and you could put in the year you want. I mean, in that timeframe...
Oh, I see, so it's five, it's almost six hundred for each of those three years.
Right, if you average.
If you add the three other...
Or you could take twenty-four and say, "I'm going to put the roofing in twenty-four, the boilers and, you know." But that's in the timeframe that all those things are coming in together. Then when you get to twenty-seven through thirty, we're down to just like an average of eighty-five thousand.
Now, something, just out of curiosity, something like the roof, you know, the windows, you could maybe do first floor one year, second floor another year, spread that out. You don't spread out.
No.
The roof, the roof happens, and it's, that's a big, big expense. Does that get, how does that get paid for?
Probably bonding.
Yeah, bonding. And you're right, Chris, in the actual, the windows, we did a little bit of research. Uh, the windows are split over two years, the year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. So they're about three fifty a year, or something like that. So clearly, like we've done at Pine Hill, we're almost done replacing all the windows at Pine Hill, we just have a few remaining too, but that's been a multi-year effort, multi-year campaign. We had to replace all the floors and all the classrooms at Pine Hill, it's a nineteen fifties construction. So, but, to be very honest, onsite insight, when they came out and did the report at Pine Hill, said, "There's no expected end of life as buildings, it's been not well maintained."
That's great.
Which is great. You know, so they have all the windows on the floors. But yeah, these are the pressure years, for sure, that three-year window for twenty twenty-four, twenty-six.
You know, like, when, when it does come time to do the windows, you would probably want to design the entire project, and then decide how you want to split the boards.
Right, and we've got, right. And then it also may be where we can, the town would piggyback other big capital needs and do a big bonding that includes multiple items. So I think this gives them the flexibility. It wouldn't just be this one thing, that region may have something that, you know, they don't have free cash for, and so they want to bond it.
So this lets the town really see, okay, we've got this big thing coming, the school's going to have this big thing coming down.
Right.
Road.
You know, in, in ten years, so. So that is what we've developed to answer sort of that question for them right now. So let's, before we move to just the placeholders for technology, is there any other discussion on the fiscal year sixteen plant facilities capital?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I see. So it looks like that's, is that our, I should remember from last year. But is that close, it looks like, you know, a hundred thousand dollars this year, or eighty thousand?
Yeah. We sound pretty, well, we try to, we try to actually, one of our goals is to try to make things even. So we do spread things to try to get even. And you notice, though, we didn't bother trying to spread too much. So two thousand nineteen, right now, we have zero. For this purpose, I was going to, we were going to try to like find something to go with.
You don't know what's going on in nineteen, and like seventeen or eighteen.
Exactly. I mean, and even, you know, twenty doesn't have that much.
Right.
And I should also point out, we've got to mention, so if you remember our June meeting, I believe it was, the question came up about paving, and who's responsible for the paving? Carol was here. So over the summer, there was multiple conversations. And so the town has come back to us and told us that they will take care of all of our paving. So about almost four hundred, less than four hundred thousand dollars was pulled out as onsite insight, future, um, cost, dealing with paving. So now that would be the sidewalks, the parking lot, the basketball courts, the playground, next time it needs to be paved, is now will all sit in the highway department.
Wow, right.
Paving budget, so they can manage that as a town project, which makes complete sense.
Absolute sense.
Yeah, yeah. So that was a huge leap up of our play, that we could take those numbers out of our numbers. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve them? And this is just placeholders, because we will get the actual estimates the next meeting, one hundred thousand three hundred and seven dollars for fiscal year sixteen.
Second?
Second.
All right.
Okay. Okay, so then we'll move on to Steve, technology.
Sure, and the technology, so similarly, we have a cover page that walks you through previous annual town meeting appropriations. So we've captured here ATM twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And so we provided some of the items that still remain open. And it's important to note that any money that was appropriated in, through, at ATM fourteen, which was actually sixty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars, so it's those bottom three lines, we're still, those are very much still in the process of being filled, and the equipment deployed and ordered, as a matter of fact. So one of the questions that came up is, does, in the tech plan supplement, does the inventory capture, which everyone loves, and now we're replicating that at Pine Hill too, does that inventory capture fourteen, fifteen purchases? Answer, no, not yet, because a lot of stuff is literally in, in process. So when IT Director Otako updated everything, he looked at everything through end of FY fourteen, so to make sure that those inventories reflect everything for the previous year. So it's an important lens through which to, you know...
So for October, will we have it in there? Because it, because it helps us with the...
We certainly can, we can.
But it will be only updated for what he's purchased.
What he's purchased.
Well, I know we just, we just paid sixty Chromebooks.
Yeah, the big items, we can, we can bake in.
I mean, that's what, I mean, because in that, because right now, if you look at fourth and fifth grade, the Chromebooks don't show up, so that just leaves a hole.
Yep. Keep in mind that we look at the tech plan supplement as the real, real premature kickoff, because Karen begins working on these for our four schools, three school districts, over the summer with the team. So there are multiple meetings, conversations, sometimes tough to get people who don't work in the summer, like the tech integrators, and to engage people. And this really, we really encourage you to look at the tech plan supplement as a dynamic document, so it's really important to look at the most current version, because we looked at this and said, "Okay, we closed fiscal fourteen, we're living fifteen, lends sixteen."
Right.
So it's really intended to be, there's a dynamic component to this tech plan supplement. So the cover page walks you through what was previously appropriated and for what. And then the following page walks you through, we really only have a tech hardware replacement line moving forward in the foreseeable future. So you don't see a lot of anchors there for things like a massive rollout of iPads necessarily for everyone in fourth grade or something like that. So for fiscal sixteen, the ask is for fifty-five thousand dollars. And one thing that Dover School Committee liked was the breakout of what that fifty-five thousand will actually be spent on. So you see that in the detail of the hardware replacement request. So that's to require, to replace a, um, a laptop cart with twenty-five, uh, twenty-five Chromebooks to replace a laptop, that's cart number two, to repurpose teacher desktops in the first floor computer lab, lab ten seventy-nine. So the idea there is, Mr. Otako wants to replace the desktops in the lab. The idea is we're going to pull, we have sort of newer desktop units that are assigned to a lot of the teachers. We'd like to pull those into the lab, this was in conversation with Principal Dial as well, and to then issue to teachers laptops, which allows them to be unfettered, as it were, to, to a particular device.
Work from home.
I think it's important to note in the plan that...
I'd like to see that.
The increased productivity for our educators and increased productivities for our students in this twenty-first century environment. So when you read the tech plan supplement, you'll see how those goals were supported by the vision of what Chikering wanted for next steps here. And, and that's why it's the technology replacement request, is how do we sustain?
And the notion of having teachers with a desktop machine, although some may want that, and that, that certainly can be discussed, I mean, others, it's really the notion of having laptops in the hands of teachers is not cutting-edge, gouge at all. It's a decade old at least. So, um, so we feel like this was really the, a brainchild, as we were sitting in Laura's office and chatting, and said, "Why, why don't we pull, we know that a lot of the teachers have the newer client, newer desktop machines, why don't we pull those in lab?" Because a lot of the software applications that are driven, that are used in the lab, it's a better device, I'm going to use that software. And then let's deploy laptops to the teachers. It seemed to make a lot more sense.
Wasn't, were we buying laptops, though, for all the teachers last, in fiscal year fourteen?
No.
No.
Oh, but all the, oh, desktops. Oh, I thought we...
So those, that's what we're putting, that's what we're putting in town?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. There's a whole question, why are we still buying these?
Yeah, I thought we had bought laptops.
That's why we're trying to repurpose, is what we're calling it, a repurposing of the, of the desktop machines. And then Anthony has a placeholder for two Cisco switches and, and all the miscellaneous hardware. So fifty-five thousand dollars is the, is the ask for fiscal year sixteen. And then what he, Anthony has done a nice job of, is going through again, and what we'll do for October is we'll have this grade level availability updated, so that'll give you a nice snapshot, which we know everyone really does appreciate. And, um, that, that would be great. And I do, I really do want to thank Karen, and Laura, and Deb, and Steve Hart, and the whole group, because this is, they began working this in July, actually, having discussions, you know? And then you're trying to piece things across three districts, and it gets interesting, right, Laura?
Well, it's, it's nice, but, so you have it in the packet for this month, but it's on the agenda for next month, so you have a whole month of careers or whatever you want to do. But I, we thought it was important that you at least sort of be able to see it, so you could improve the placeholder, it makes sense. But again, we'll, you know, that will be revisited in October if necessary.
And as we revisit it in July, Chikering and I look at, with Anthony and Otako, the action steps for this year, and revise some of those. So you may not see the exact same plan from last year, focused this year, because we can have a, a better lens on what needed to happen. We're sort of projecting out what fifteen and sixteen will look like in our action steps for fifteen and sixteen. Who knows what we'll accomplish this year, great things.
Right, well, it's much appreciated.
So are these one already?
So we're approving everything tonight as placeholders, so that we can get it to the town before our next meeting.
Okay.
And but then we'll, knowing that we'll have to tweak my guesses, knowing how we've seen variances between real estimates and onsite insight. But those numbers will deviate a little, but at least they have a ballpark. I don't think it's gonna deviate more than 20%, like it did before, yeah. So this is just so that we can abide by their timeline.
Right, okay, that's what I was curious.
So do I have a motion for a placeholder again, to quest fifty-five thousand dollars for the Dover capital budget technology?
I'm moved.
Second? All in favor?
Right.
Okay, so then we'll be ready to send this to the...
Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, Chris.
God, careful.
Okay.
Unless you'd like to stay for a second.
It's like to think about that.
Moving on.
So Steve, if you just wanna give, because I, I've heard this numerous times, but a little bit about the, on the agendas of goal focus points and your goal for that goal.
Sure, so the idea here was, we're so grateful that we, we are at a place in, in the maturation of our school system and our admin team, where we have a defined set of goals for all members of the administrative cabinet and the school system. And you approve those goals in June and it spans all three districts. So the whole idea was, so that school committee members, when you get to the point where you need to think about, in particular reviewing superintendent and, and others and just contemplating where we are as a school system, you're able to really go back into school committee meeting minutes and packets and see some substantive items that are directly correlated to those goals. So educators in our school system are tying their goals to our system-wide goals. My goals are clearly those goals, the admin cabinets tying their goals to those goals. So the, the whole mantra is, people should be able to plug in to one of those buckets, right? Either around students, academics, educators, or innovation, those are the four buckets. And so our idea was to structure an agenda where different contributors offer items around those goals. So the topics were derived from each administrator, who said, you know, I'd like to speak or share on such and such. So Principal Dial said she'd really like to provide an overview of, together with Dr. Ryan, of the schedule, because the master schedule is so fundamentally important to what we do here at Chicory. And we thought in a logical way to tee up a conversation that will come up next month and in subsequent months around budgeting, just so you have that lens of who's taught, what's taught, when is it taught, why is it, you know, and all that kind of thing. So, and I knew that near and dear to all of our hearts is the educator evaluation ratings, obviously from last year. We are probably the first public school district in state that's literally said, here you go, here are our results. I mean, you could go and try to fine these at some point this year, but we feel like, particularly with Mrs. Doherty having been on that committee with us for over two years, and she's been just an incredible member of that committee, that this is really what it's about. So we wanted to spend a few minutes and say, let's talk about year in review, 13, 14. Not holding administrators off, but looking at all educators for our school system. So that being said, if we can jump into that, so my topic for this month, I wanted to provide for you by building, the teacher aggregate, teacher educator ratings, percentage and number by, by rating category as determined by the state. Okay? So we looked at the percent and number of staff evaluated, the, the percent and number in the exemplary rating, proficient rating, and needs improvement rating. And you know what, they're really, there's, this isn't sort of the revelation of all time here. It's, we expected the lion's share of folks to be in proficient, I don't think anyone out of the group would have expected anything different, right? But I think that what's important is for school committee to hear a bit about those educators for whom, whether they're teachers or administrators, who are in need of some support, and that resides at the core of the evaluation system. So as you can see in a very transparent way, we have some educators across our school system who were deemed in different places within the needs improvement realm. And we have, we have action plans and benchmarks set up for those educators, be they teachers or administrators, and there are both, who need some support. And, and those benchmarks are really set up in a very discernible way through the schools, through the school year. So it's not as if those supports will go on for years and years and years. Clearly, as in the spirit of the educator, of the law, the educator evaluation law, that it's a, it's a fairly compressed schedule. It's intense support over a compressed period of time to help educators to grow. And so I'm happy to field questions, but we wanted to make sure this was, this was put out there for you.
It's very helpful. And I guess one of my questions is, under proficient, just the same way, you know, with MCATs, you have kids who are at this end of proficient, like a proficient approach to exemplary, and we have those who are proficient because you had just kind of came in by the skin of your teeth. Is there a way to, well, I would also hope that we support those who are pushing to exemplary, like how, what can we do to help you become the, that exemplary teacher? And also, what can we do for those of you who just kind of slid in, does that factor into the...
So you've raised a few interesting points, and one is that the DSCA, we, we just have a very, a very strong working relationship, the administration and DSCA. And to their credit, to the leadership of DSCA, they themselves, out of the gate, and Laura knows this well, it was the mantra of exemplary is really, to use, to coin the frame, it's a place you visit, you don't live.
Right, I remember.
It's a very, right, and, and you know, they lived it. And they, they really embraced it, and they worked with us to make sure that the membership across our three school districts really understood that.
Yeah.
I'm not, that's not to suggest there wasn't some growing pain around that, for sure.
Sure, for sure, and we are all exemplary, but...
Well, and it happened with administrators too, right, I mean, it's human, and so that was, that was extraordinary. In terms of, and I'll certainly ask Laura or Deb to, to speak to, had they had those kinds of conversations with teachers and say, here I am, I'm proficient, I get it, that's a great place to be, I'm doing my job, doing my job well and servicing kids, but how do I get there? You know, what's that next step? What I will say is that proficient sandbox is not as quantifiable, truly, as one may, so you look at multiple, multiple standards, and ultimately, that summative rating is, is quite discretionary to the evaluator. That's the way the law is written. So it isn't as if there's something that puts you, I'm a high proficient, I'm a low proficient, I'm a mid proficient. That's, that's not, it's not baked into the, the state law, right? So we were, you know, really interested, obviously, in, and I will say that if, if an educator was to be rated summatively evaluated as exemplary, it really required sitting down with myself, with Karen, and we had a conversation on what that looked like. So there really was a lot of discourse around that it wasn't like, you know, so these things weren't...
Can I just add, when you're, when you're looking at that proficient range, the DS rubric is seven categories with multiple indicators associated in those categories. So when we evaluate somebody, somebody may be in the needs improvement for an element of that category, which is a way for Deb, Laura, Marla, Terry and I to say to that educator, you really need to focus on family and community engagement. That's not something I'm seeing a lot of evidence, let's work there. Or using data to inform instruction, or whatever element in there, they were still proficient, they still met the standard, but they could have been a little bit better. And I think that's where we, you can move people along the proficient continuum.
Okay, great, yes, and that would be, in, say you were working with me, as I made, you make the SMART goals every year, right? Even if you're not being evaluated.
That's correct.
So you would maybe work with me and say, you know, personally, love your vision around curriculum, but this family piece, so I'd really like to see your goals coming in there and keep up the good work.
Yes, for your professional practice goal, that could be a place to look. And then there's the student learning goal, which is turning into more, and Laura and Deb have done a nice job with the professional learning communities and thinking about team goals, so that there's a focus and that links into those district determined measures. So it's all coming together. I have to say that the superintendent's goals have given us a roadmap. Not that we didn't have that last year, but it's clear, what is the work we need to do this year? And you can see the dots in there.
And it's, Laura, Deb, do you wanna jump in on any aspects of that? Particularly maybe, I think school committee would be interested, like, what do some of the supports look like for folks that maybe not even summatively are needs improvement or need to be, but in even, even one of the categories of somebody with needs improvement, what do, what do some of the supports maybe look like? Seth's?
Regular meetings, a lot of discussions, coaching. And to the point you were just making around goals, we do have a lot of team goals because of the significant work we're doing with professional learning communities. And I'm always asking and thinking about my own practice in terms of, you know, what are the areas that I want to grow in? And it may not fall, it likely will not fall into a formal goal that is set, because we're limited to two, a professional practice and a student learning goal. And we really want that focus to be on collaboration with other members and looking for the, a team determined goal. But we always have that as part of the discussion, and I, I think, you know, with the evaluation system, the most significant change is going to come through the discussions, it's not through the forums.
Right.
So that's, we are responsible for making sure that those discussions happen. I do feel a responsibility to that, to educators.
As an example, so I had a meeting and it wasn't at Chicory, so I'll disassociate from the building for a minute, but in one of the other schools had a meeting with the principal headmaster of the building this morning, and we were chatting about a particular educator who is in need of improvement. And the principal headmaster was, was thrilled to report that this particular educator literally approached the headmaster and said, you know, I would really like to get some support in literacy and went on in that avenue. And also said, there's somebody that I'd really like to go observe, someone that, someone that I know. You know, we talked about when we were having a conversation, and I'd really like to go observe that person, so can we work that in? And he was like the person, like literally had a spring in her step kind of thing, because, you know, I mean, everyone wants to do a good job. And, and that's what it's about, so it was just really, this, the headmaster said, I just, she was a little taken aback, that was, you know.
And that's what you would certainly, and we just like with kids, you know, when kids don't do well at something, we hope to, we then sit down with them and say, okay, how can we help you do better? And they get engaged and they do better. So it's really, you know, your best, that's the best of how this would work, that it's not, you know, it brings growth, so.
And one of the big things we're working on now is the QPO version of the part, component of our program. So the qualified peer observer was something that Laura knows near and dear to her heart, because we talked about it. And then that whole group that got together for two years and developed our plan. So Karen got in touch with John Dioria from Teachers 21, and John's cloud, and met with us in my office, he's met with the admin cabinet, he's met with an instructional leadership team, system-wide, and John will be coming out and delivering a whole message to a whole teaching faculty and then doing breakouts with the buildings. But when he looked at a lot of the tenants of our program, of our, of our evaluation system, he said, it's really pretty remarkable. And some of the aspects where you're looking to say, here are, here's an exemplary component of our workforce, and how do we credential, set up a credentialing system so that those folks are able to go and work with their peers? He said it's just, but that's what we're about, I mean, we're good, why not harness that, right? And galvanize some support around that, and so it's pretty good.
That's great, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Steve? Sorry, I apologize for being like, I'm sorry. Um, the, in the spirit of trying to unquater the, the daily and weekly work of, of an educator, is there anything in the learning year by year of the evaluation process that links into that? And that, I, it, it's such an inspiring and useful tool, I think for school committee, for the community, and for, for I'm sure the educators themselves. And I imagine year by year, you had this iteration of, okay, we, we didn't do this as well as we could, so we're going to do it better. But is, but is there any, any learning points of...
Of significance.
Of, of, of these maybe 12 things, where actually these two were less useful, so they can be locked off the clutter?
So in the first year, in our inaugural year, last year of the system, of course, it was a new system, new platform, heightened level of anxiety, fair to say, both elementary schools in light of, right, depressed enrollments and the consequence and the magnitude, all totally relevant. And then we had baseline edges, our interface for the system, so it's not only the system, it's how do you play with it and how do you get in that sandbox? So that was a learning challenge for everyone. But Karen, the admin cabinet, the DSCA, the leadership team, we got together on June 12th, the evaluation committee, we got together, and we looked at what did, we did a deep, total debrief, what forms worked, what didn't work, what dates were wrong, what did, what needed to be tweaked? And that was everyone, that was three school committee members, cabinet, DSCA leadership, that got together and did this complete like brain drain after the first year. And it helped to fine tune a lot of what we had to do up the summer, just in terms of some of the refinements, yeah.
Will that meet, that group, that subcommittee and ongoing committee, will it meet out of regular...
Yes, I think we wanna start meeting bimonthly, every month something, that'd be great. Are you up for that too?
I try to keep my distance.
Why are you gonna talk about direct deposit?
Maybe get someone through their community service hours.
Exactly, that's a good spot. Okay, anything else on Mr. Glus' goal four? Okay, good, so Dr. Lu Duke is gonna talk about professional development, his goals 1, 3, and 4.
Right, because when you think about how we meet some of those goals, it's providing a professional development for our educators. So in, in the, when you're thinking about the social emotional learning, which is goal number three, our educators participated in safety care training, which was hosted here at Chicory, the zones of regulation also here at Chicory, the trauma care, which was hosted at the middle school. For goal number one, it's instructional strategies for all students. And it was spending some time with those curriculum units over the summer, you know, our educators spent a lot of time. I think it was one administrator who said, all told, the educators spent 180 days this summer doing a lot of professional development. So it was just that, that lens of looking at it, looking at the assessment, refining those district determined measures. And some of the great work came out of the conversations about what do those really mean. And then to look at education evaluation is certainly those educators who are developing those SMART goals, professional development that we've done for those SMART goals and how they're crafted, and that's happening right now. So that's certainly, this isn't an exhaustive list of what happened over the summer, but just sort of a taste. Our first early release day happened to be September, was it 10th, with educators working on all of these things again. Particularly here at Chicory, they were working in those professional learning communities, developing those relationships, looking at SMART goals, and thinking about how they were going to integrate the social studies content into the powering riders from last year. So there's some great work happening. The next early release day is October 1st, and that work will continue. So that work alone hits goal number one and goal number four, because it is part of the SMART goals. So there's a lot of great things happening.
Thank you, Dr. Lu.
Thank you.
I wanna update a little bit on what's been happening with the reorganization. We have goals around the reorganization and figuring out how we can use this new system for efficiencies and better programming for students and tracking all of those things. So as I started the year out, I had a few goals for myself, and one was, the, the most important was a smooth transition for each of the buildings, so that everybody felt supported, everybody felt like they knew who they had in their buildings to go to and who to work with. So it's, it's been a great process, working with Marla is wonderful, she's transitioned, transitioned very well into Pine Hill, I love her there. She was very helpful for me getting to know the staff and systems here at Chicory. And I helped her to sort of understand the process that Pine Hill uses, who the staff are, who the students are. We've been getting to know the families in each of the buildings, so it's, it's been a great process. We did it. And then at the region, the middle school has Jill Arkin, who is the new team chair, who's working there. And at the high school, Lindy Roberts Isaacs. And each of them, we have provided some professional development for Pamela Travlers, Travers, who was the special ed administrator at the region. I think she's been gone four years now.
Four years, she's been off four years.
Has been coming in and working with them, and it's been, it's been a time that they can talk with her sort of about, you know, what, what happens when this situation arises, you know, how do you handle certain... when this situation arises, you know, how do you handle certain situations? I'm working with them on each of the cases that we have that are specific to our school, but they're talking with her more in broad categories, so that's been really very helpful. The staff has been great. They actually started meeting with me, a number of them in the late spring, as soon as the school committees had all voted that we were going to move in the direction of the reorganization. A lot of the staff came in over the summer and met with me, I've had a chance to catch up with all of them. The biggest learning curve for me has been, of course, the region that I have not had as much contact with, but they've been fabulous if I come in to do that. So it was the first goal, just to sort of know that we started the school year with a smooth transition. And now we're really talking about identifying those efficiencies. So looking at the process that each of the building has for doing different things and figuring out, how can we do this more efficiently and more consistently among the districts has been really very important. And we're identifying a number of areas where we can do that. Everything from the policies and the procedural kinds of things we do to the budgetary pieces of what we're doing now with the three districts. So that's been really very helpful and wonderful. The other thing that we have talked a lot about is identifying roles. So what is the role of the team chair in the middle and the high school? What is the role of the elementary special ed administrator at the elementary school? And defining that for not only all of us, myself included, but for the staff in each of those buildings as well. So that's where we are right now, and those are our top priorities at this time.
And how do you feel the parents have reacted at the start of the school year, sort of the changes and?
I think things have gone very smoothly.
Good.
I don't think I think that's for a smoother transition and opening. Everybody's worked really hard to get to know everybody and support the parents whenever we need to.
We're in pretty regular contact with Pamela Dado, who heads up our CPAC. And Pam reached out a couple weeks ago to us and said, "You know, what can I do? I mean, it's just, everything seems pretty..." What? You know? And it's just great knowing we have such an ally in Pam as a parental source of support. It's really, I just, I can't tell you how many times I drive home from school and I think, "How did we do without Terry at the table?" So when we meet in the Sun and Love is every Monday morning, we do a complete drain of everything that we're working on. It's having Terry there to say, "Here's the plan at Chicaring, Pine Hill, Lu," and she hasn't missed a beat, she's putting in incredibly long hours, please make sure you don't put in too long hours. And it's just, it's wonderful because she's, I mean, caught up on the budget, the cases, it's just been pretty, it's been amazing, to be honest with you. So, thank you, Terry. Welcome to our.
And so on a going forward basis, I think we've talked about this somewhere, you'll come and see us not every month, but quarterly or what was it? I forgot what the decision is.
Well, Terry's always welcome.
Yeah, no, always welcome, though. I think we're very, I mean, we're trying not to, where, I mean, some people have to come to all three school committees in a month, but where we can be efficient, so always let us know when you need to come, but it don't always have to.
Partially, you don't, depending on what's on the agenda for that month, then what things I need to speak to.
But know that we're not offended if you don't come.
Thank you.
Would it make sense if we're going to speak to enrollment next month to have her here next month just to talk about if there's any unexpected changes since we set up the budget back in December? I don't think this building, that one would be inappropriate next time.
So on the back page of the new enrollment report, it's on legal size, on the back page will have special ed numbers. You know how last year in September, December, May? I think you saw three iterations of special ed numbers. You know, it's our intent to sort of lay out some of those numbers on the backside of that enrollment report, so maybe.
Well, one thing we were thinking, and I don't think we finalized the joint meeting in October, but I want a lot more, I'd like to see a lot more of the out of district we have discussed with joint, with the region and us, because we share the budget, and I think sometimes that's not always clear. So that was, that was a potential item, I think, to have a sped up date of the joint meeting with all three, and that way you, you know, we're talking about.
Maybe we could actually, maybe we could actually do an inaugural kind of roll out of the enrollment report, which would be a logical segue, because it'll take a little bit of time to figure.
Oh, yeah, the joint, yeah.
Yeah, the joint meeting, right?
Yeah.
That's a nice idea.
Is that before our meeting?
That's October 20.
It's before, yes.
It's the 21st.
So then we could get into the details of our school after that.
Right.
If you need.
Yeah. So anything I think that we find that is sort of links all three school committees are trying to throw into a joint meeting, so we're all hearing the same thing once, and saves, you've got everyone time if you don't have to say the same thing three times over the course of the month. So I think that's.
We were just going to start recording it and then we.
Right. Or just say, "Watch the, well, watch region."
Right, it's like the flipped classroom. It's the flipped school committee.
I love that idea, Chris. You don't even know what to watch.
Please watch the YouTube video and then comment your questions.
Exactly. Well, great, I'm so happy everything's been smooth. It is great to have someone overseeing the whole district.
I agree.
Yeah. Thank you. Now we'll jump back into the master schedule. We started a little bit earlier. Two hours ago? No. Great. We talked about showing the master schedule because it really encapsulates a lot of the changes that were made at Chicaring. So we'll get started up here.
Okay, so we will dive in. All last year, Marla Dev and I talked about what we really wanted for Chicaring, what would school day look like, what would we like to see across grade levels, and a lot of it is tied to the schedule. So we were able to put all those ideas into the schedule that we do have this year. Dev did an amazing job pulling those, all those ideas together and actually creating a concrete schedule for us. And the purpose is to think, what can we do schoolwide to create some consistencies across all the grades? Block scheduling, we've had pieces of that before, but we did some more of it than we've done in the past. And it allows for a better coordination of services among teachers. So we are very interdependent with each other. If we have a special educator who needs to go into a classroom, or we have a literacy specialist going in to provide tier two services, supports, or we have a guidance counselor needing to meet with a student, it's much easier if we have a common band across the grade level. It's much more efficient than having to go to each individual teacher and say, you know, "When does it work?" And because of the block schedule, we were able to have schedules ready for students opening day. Two days later, we had all of the special education services layered in. Following that was tier two literacy services layered in. So it certainly created some efficiencies and it allowed students to get down to the business of learning in a much quicker fashion this year. It also creates a lot of opportunities for grouping students in different ways. So if an entire grade level has math at the same time, you can group a couple students from this class with a couple students from that class. And it's particularly beneficial when you're looking at some students who might not have such a large cohort of fellow students at the same point in their learning. Block scheduling also means that there is a place for everything. So SSTs, which is student support teams, where we, you know, talk about some ideas that we want to provide, services we want to provide for students or new interventions, IEP meetings, all school assemblies, there are specific places for those to occur now. And what it means is it preserves time during the rest of the school day for whole class instruction. Whereas before, we may have had students pulled out for a variety of reasons. Designating certain times for small group instruction or for special supports really allows for more time on learning in the end. I talked about this at open house last year, and it was a little trippy to make it a reality, but this year it is. We have school officially starting at 8:45. Students have about 10 minutes to make sure they're in their classrooms, settling in, you know, signing in, doing their lunch orders and that sort of thing. And then 8:45 is when we want the whole class instruction to begin. So we've looked closely at how to build some efficiencies in at the beginning of the day. Just a little historical note, Chicaring is very committed to the arts and music programming, and in order to keep it within the day in the past, some of the music offerings were at the very beginning of the day. But then that meant that the entire group of students was not necessarily in their class at that time. So we have a special designated place for all of those music consumables now, and it allows for whole class instruction in the classrooms to begin at 8:45. We have a 90-minute literacy block. It allows for consistent time on learning, and within that, we have a 30-minute literacy team block. So within that 90 minutes, somewhere in there, beginning, middle, or end, there's 30 minutes for targeted literacy. And as part of that, we have a new literacy team this year. In the past, we've had one literacy specialist. That person now works with two educational assistants who really have a lot of expertise in literacy, that function is a team this year. And Dev will pick up after I share some of these ideas with you and show you what it actually looks like. But that whole team goes in and they go in altogether in kindergarten for the first half hour, then they literally roll into first grade, then they roll into second grade. And it's an intense model, but it provides so much support for the students when they really, really need it. We want to build those really strong foundational skills in the very beginning. When that's happening during that half hour, all students are doing some kind of small group work. So it's not just that there's a literacy group and other kids are, you know, doing independent reading or something. Everyone's working in some small group at that point. 60-minute math blocks, that's really setting the minimum amount of time on math. I would say most classes do more than that, but one of the objectives of block scheduling is to make sure we're getting at least a certain amount of time on math, and then teachers have the option of, you know, adding on more time in the afternoon when they don't have a designated block. Common specialist classes, so the entire fifth grade team has a specialist at the same time, same for every single grade level, and that means during that time, that entire grade level team can get together and collaborate. Once a week has always been designated for official common planning time, when they're talking about logistics, the working student work and those sorts of things. Potentially, they could do that whenever they want because they have this time in Intervention blocks, I think I've talked a little bit about this with this group. It's a half hour consistently every full day of the week. We're really exploring what that can look like right now. I'm doing a lot of visiting the classrooms right now and seeing what it looks like and talking with teachers about what they might be able to do. The objective is to make sure that we are extending students' learning in many different ways, going outside the curriculum and stretching students. And it's, I think, very exciting professionally. When I was a classroom teacher and providing this kind of work, I got to know my students in a way I had never known before. And I'm starting to hear that from my teachers, and that's really exciting.
I have to say, from a marketing standpoint, I still stumbled over calling it intervention because to me, it seems like it's support and not stretching. I was thinking about this this morning. What about like building blocks? Or, I mean, I just still, you know, and I know what it means, but I still don't, from a marketing standpoint, I don't think that's exactly the best way to sell it. So just something to think about.
I know what you're saying, and that's certainly come up in discussions. This is, you know, called an RTI model or block in other schools as well. There's some reasons for coming to this name, and where we are right now is wanting to rebrand it, essentially, you know, explaining. And intervention does carry that connotation, but you can also intervene to extend.
I know, but you have to think that's a lot of steps to think. If you're telling the building blocks. I like it. But building blocks, to me, like you're building on what you, it's a block where you can build wherever you are, you build higher.
Right.
So just, that's what I was doing this morning. So.
So certainly a point taken. I would say what we're doing this year is we are changing the model and keeping the name. So we can consider name change.
I'll stick around.
So this is what I believe you have in your packet, and this is an overall view, and I'm going to turn it over to Dev at this point, and she's also going to show you, kind of zoom in on certain aspects of this schedule. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Ryan.
Where Laura thanked me for doing a lot of the groundwork on this, I think a lot of my food was to go to Cheryl Chase, who was my mentor in making this schedule, so thank you Cheryl for helping me untangle the big pieces of this. The way this schedule is set is in 15-minute blocks, so those are the times down the side, and then across the top is each grade level. So this is page one of about a 30-page document, that's the school schedule. We're only going to make you look through this one. But the important point of this to look at is it's color-coded, so those 90-minute literacy blocks, you can see, happen at the same time. Kindergarten, first, second, and third grade all have their literacy first thing in the morning, fifth grade a little bit later, and fourth grade, starting at the latest block in the day. Special is that phys ed, art, music time, so all, like Laura said, all of the fifth grade have their special at 8:45. And then the math blocks are set in in blue. Lunch and recess, we've gone back to a model we had a couple of years ago where kindergarten and first grade have lunch recess opposite each other, second and third, fourth and fifth. We tried something different last year and wound up with a less than satisfactory environment. So we've gone to this one.
Make of that what you will.
Okay. And then the sage green block labeled IB.
It's called IB. That's a better pun, I like IB.
You're thinking of international block.
We're so smart. People would love international block.
I know, exactly. We're sort of the IB. No, there was a committee on that already. And the IB time starts at about 11:45, 12 o'clock in the afternoon, and runs through the day. So those are generally in the afternoon. The literacy blocks, if you look up at the kindergarten one, there's a blocked in area at the first time. This is the literacy team intervention here for kindergarten, first grade. Second and third share their time, and then fifth grade and fourth grade times are here. What this means is we wind up with an extra load here, so we're moving a lot of our literacy time to the third grade, IB time, and we're finding it's getting heavy. So while we're trying out the schedule, there's parts of it that are working very nicely and there's parts of it that we're still tweaking or working, getting our list for next year or things we'd like to change. One of the things that we've heard is that kindergarten lunch is really early.
Say 10:30.
But you flip that to last year, 1:15 is a really late lunch for fifth graders. So there's, I'm going to get that balance and then go on. If you take the schedule and then push it all to the side, what this looks like is that these IB times in the day are all lined up. They don't, the fourth and fifth grade overlaps at the end of the day. The lunch recess represents the block in the middle, and then those specials throughout the day. So all of our specialists are teaching during all those time blocks. The really neat thing is those half-day Wednesdays are opposite the long-day Wednesdays, and so during those times, we reserve them for SST times as well as our all-school assemblies. So when Flame the Band was here, PTO has been very flexible with us, and we're trying to do all those assemblies on Wednesday afternoons, which means we no longer have an A week and a B week. So for any of you that were trying to remember which week to send library books and sneakers, it's all the same. The difference is just you need your tag, your PTO tag, to know which ones are the half-days, so you know what day to be home to me.
half-days, so you know what day to be home to meet us. I think our last slide is to zoom in on that literacy block time.
Any questions?
I've got two small ones.
Thank you.
So the first one is, I'd love to understand the thinking behind where some of the blocks landed, and if the answer is it's the collective professional experience of people in this building period, that's a brilliant answer, and that's great. But I just, things like, what struck me were the IB time is all in the afternoon. I'd love to understand the thinking of that. Or math is generally late in the day, except in fourth grade. Is there a reason, or is there strategic game behind that decision? So that's my question, first question.
It's the collective wisdom.
Yeah, it's interesting what drives the schedule. So one of the first things that actually gets blocked in, oddly enough, is lunch recess. And then the specials get blocked in. Originally, I actually had math in the afternoon, and fourth grade caused a small rebellion. And so that's why math is first thing in fourth grade.
And so this really leads a little bit onto my second question. Because I think scheduling and time can be one of, can be one of the most useful tools to support a strategic aim, whatever that is. I think allocation time, how you use your time. If you could collectively wave your collective magic wand and change anything, would it be, I'm just wondering what it would be to help you have more time to achieve the end that we're trying to do? Would it be, you said lunch gets blocked in first. So lunch is clearly the biggest pain in the rear to manage. You mentioned the ten-something for kindergartens and four PM for fifth graders. But it just, would a cafeteria three times the size, would that help? Would that solve a lot of problems? I'm just, if you could have something that would change the pressures that went into squeezing things in, I just wonder what it would be. Because if you, not now, but if you could maybe think about it and come back to us, I just think that this is such, this is the most important foundation starting point of helping the brilliant people in this building do their job, is time, how you use it, how structured, how it is. And if the first, if the first point for tremendous reasons is where we do lunch, perhaps we can do something to help that.
Thank you. That's great. We'll certainly think about that. I think the hardest part is right now, it feels very tight for everyone, the way the schedule is set up. I think that's important. So that's the piece that we're struggling with getting it to have a little more flow, but it's certainly interesting to think about what we could wish for, so we'll take that into consideration.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. We will certainly think about that. You know, one of the things that it does allow for that I think is really working is it really lets people collaborate a lot more because people say, oh, you know, I really am interested in knowing what math looks like in fourth grade. The entire fourth grade is happening at the same time. They can start visiting classes. We've encouraged people to do that this year before we have that formal peer observation as part of the evaluation system, you know, connect with some people, you know, ask to visit, ask to be visited. And it helps me have a much better understanding of, you know, what does social studies look like in third grade? So it's been helpful. We certainly, you know, every year have things that we want to improve upon, but I think that the teachers have been very willing to, to really, you know, dive in and try it out, and they're making it work.
The last maybe comment I'll just share is that the, or your word up, more instructional time. Fantastic. Is there any, perhaps not now, but at the end of the year, it'd be lovely to understand if there was any way to quantify that versus what the schedule was last year. Your point about eight forty-five, and that's when we start, but that probably gives one element, but I'm imagining the flow, the improved flow, the less transition time there is in a collective schedule, the more instructional time is. And I'd love to understand maybe at the end of the year, if one could quantify that. I know that's a pain, and it's more cluttering, and I've just been talking about uncluttering, which is not helpful. But I just think it'd be great for Dawn's marketing hat to talk about, this year, we've actually done eight percent more instructional time, or three percent, or whatever it is. It's nice to share with the community. You've worked so hard on it, and it's come out with a good thing, let's put a label on it.
It is. I think getting to that point would necessitate looking oftentimes at the individual student level. So for example, our music ensembles are now in the intervention block period, making sure that students also have time for some of those other good things that happen with the classroom teacher. If those were happening at other times during the school day, it wouldn't necessarily show up in the master schedule, but it would show up in that individual student's schedule, and it would have an impact on what that classroom teacher was able to do with her entire, or his entire class. But it's, yeah, the information's there.
So, I'm sorry, so for example, so when's third grade chorus, for example?
During the third grade IB block, IB time.
So since so many kids take, so that would say maybe be on Thursday?
Monday.
Okay, so Monday, third grade IB time. If history is any indicator, many third graders are in chorus, right? They still get to choose? Okay. So what do the kids who aren't in chorus do?
So then the teachers know that those students would still be in the classroom, and the teacher will choose the work that they want to do with those students. But it's a known factor, and we know exactly when it's going to happen, so we can plan for it. And I think that's the other aspect, we're really able to plan much better for times when any student is working in a group outside of the classroom.
It's also a wonderful time for OT services or an executive functioning group. So during that IB time.
If they aren't doing chorus?
Just on Mondays.
Just on Mondays.
Just on Mondays at the third grade chorus, fourth and fifth grade chorus, Mondays. Just four other days that they could.
Be pulled out for that.
There's a lot of movement in a wing around that time.
Okay. And then, so then, fourth grade band is actually a special because they're a band of reporters, right? So that's during the blues special block. And then fifth grade band, is that also?
Same as fourth.
It's also a special, in one of that special times. Okay.
So I know we're talking about the FUS program in February, but just from my mind, because time on learning was a huge issue when we met, and I'm just curious how it worked into first grade with the increase. Are those the white blocks, or where is this vanish in here?
So, okay, so in kindergarten and first grade, we have two different teachers. So one teacher's doing kindergarten, one's doing first. And their schedule is, in kindergarten, they have twenty minutes, and so the first one starts right after the math block in kindergarten, and then the other two happen behind the IB block in first grade, which is, Cheryl really helped me untangle things, that big long white block in the first grade day is where we have the thirty minutes for FUS. But remember, it, she goes from room to room to room, so it doesn't happen at the same time. So it's other things that happen in their rooms.
Exactly. Okay, so that's where that is. Okay, so that works.
Four days, yes.
So it'll be interesting to see, I mean, because there's not a whole lot of, there are some blocks in third grade to try to bed in next year. I mean, there's not as much weight in third grade.
So we'll go in second grade.
Second grade, yeah. Oh, a little bit there. Yeah, okay.
Now, I have another question, just looking, and I, this is really our preview, but, and I trust that you guys are working this out, but there's a big, long block for kindergartners to be going from eleven thirty to, to whatever they go out for their afternoon recess?
They go out at two thirty for their afternoon recess.
Right, that's a big, long block of work time.
But it's special in rest, sorry, their special and rest block are in there as well. So they're not trapped in their room for that whole, long stretch.
Is that the phraseology you used, Dr.? Problematic.
We're doing some independent reading.
Yeah, there's a lot going on, and, you know, if they're in there for a block of time, it's not necessarily that they're just sitting at desks, they're just sitting on the rug, you know, they're doing the center work. There's a lot of movement, and especially in kindergarten, there's a lot of built-in movement breaks.
Yeah. Any other questions?
This is so fabulous. It is. And actually, I'll echo what Adrian was saying, you know, somebody said once, you can tell, the mission of a school really is reflected in its schedule. That's how you see what a school's true values are. It doesn't really mean what you say. So, and clearly, can I learn? Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
So Mr. Bliss, maybe we'll be starting on our MCAS.
We're going to pick them up. So administration recommends remaining with MCAS for physical ensemble. Right here, second.
Second. We'll be back to the discussion.
See that whole paragraph?
We all saw, all summer long, everyone did their research.
Yeah, thank you.
I will say, by the way, I was with someone yesterday in training from another school district that's, I assume, within our peers, and they did the same thing. And they actually spent a lot of time on technology, and were flirting with it because of the whole technology opportunity, but they still stayed.
And all two, our two other districts remained with MCAS as well.
I had a whole nice.
I know. And Dana told me, she's like, cut it out.
As I said, it's like Dover Town meeting. We could have had that food and Dana had her.
I know.
But thank you for the preparation. I know that you came to the recommendation from a very thoughtful place.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So TELMAS and Chicaring interview survey, is that back to the line?
Yeah, Laura.
So we reviewed the TELMAS survey results as a staff last year at a staff meeting, and spent some time with it and really found that we wanted a more specific survey, specific to Chicaring. So we developed that, we administered it in the spring, and really took a lot of time as administrative team looking at it, and in fact, reflected a lot of it back out to the staff through the weekly newsletter. And it was very beneficial. You know, we asked about some of the new things we did last year, new models for SSTs. We asked about a variety of things, and we really got some helpful feedback that we've intentionally incorporated this year. So I think that, you know, it's important certainly to look at the TEL survey, and I think the most telling results for us was around professional development and wanting to have input into that. And, you know, we decided to invest heavily in professional learning communities this year. And while that might not have been a collective decision, certainly educators are driving that. So our curriculum leaders did a lot of training over the summer to understand really the purpose of professional learning communities and understand how to launch that. But it's very much the teachers driving their own professional development, and fortunately, we have a lot of time to do that this year. Those long Wednesday afternoons. So I'm so appreciative that we have that as a school. Very excited to see where we end up at the end of the year.
Well, a little off topic, but you were talking about communications. I think that your principal report is so great that I would recommend you share it in one of your email blasts, and maybe give a little blurb, like, read this because this is, it contains maybe a couple of key points to entice people to click on to it, but it's such valuable information that I hate that's only shared with us. So one recommendation. And I know you picked up part of your technology in the last email blast, but there's so much other great information in there that I think would really educate our parents more. And I think when you start having these, you know, column curriculum, what do you call?
Partnering with parents.
Partnering with parents, but for them just to read about what you're trying to do versus just having it partnering with parents, mention in the newsletter, I think might entice more people to come.
Or understanding the thinking that went behind the schedule. You know, I think that's huge, and, you know, even just talking about, you know, also how beneficial it is for kids, it gets back to the whole executive functioning, you know, the kids here in Chicaring now really know, not that they didn't know this before, but it's really clear, this is what we do here. We come in and we do reading in the morning, and we do, like, this is, it's such a secure feeling for kids, and puts them in a very good place to learn.
On professional, sorry, Laura.
I appreciate you, David.
On professional development, I keep meeting parents who think that, who have no idea what happens on early Wednesday afternoons. They think that there's Sun Landers and card games breaking out. And they don't. I'm just wondering, and we talked about it last year, and I know your email blast was used very effectively last year on a couple of highlighting what happened, and this is, these are the problems that we look to solve on, but I'm just wondering, maybe rather than early Wednesdays, professional development Wednesdays, or just, I think that it's impossible to tell people too often that this is what happens on early Wednesdays, is that teachers use it for brushing. But I had two last week. But I'm really?
Yeah, they figure it out as they get along, but elementary.
So we're moving on, so we have a new item, and we talked about this a little bit at our planning meeting in September, the consent agenda. So basically, we're going to put anything on this agenda that is very routine business, that all the information you need for these items will be in the packet, and you're expected to have read them before. And if there's anything on there that you feel you have major issues with or big discussion items, then when we come to the consent agenda, you have to ask for it to be removed. Otherwise, we take one vote.
Oh, so it's like panel meeting.
Yes, we'll take one vote, and all the items on the consent agenda will be, consent agenda will be approved at one time.
Ooh, love it. Like that.
We did allow ourselves a little flexibility with the minutes. If there are any edits, we can do that. I mean, strict, you're supposed to pull it out, but I think we're going to be a little more flexible with that, so if there's any minute issues.
And on the minutes, I mean, there was one tiny, tiny grammatical thing. Do we even want to discuss it or let it go?
Just, why don't you just email it to me, and I'll submit it to you. Okay. So on this.
So we're actually collaborative.
Yeah, there's like three people that worked on this, and some of them. On the consent agenda this month, then, we have the anonymous donation acceptance, which you have a letter in your packet from Steve, the appointment of the school nurse, which you have a letter from Steve and her resume, four sets of school committee minutes, and we do approve all overnight trips for the school. So we are approving the fifth grade nature's classroom for spring 2015, which all that information is in the packet. So any comments on the minutes? If not, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda for September 23rd.
Ensemble.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I think, actually, I think we just, I don't want to have to vote necessarily, but we'll vote for that.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next part of the agenda are things included in your packet for review. So just as we have in the past, you have the Sherwin School Committee Minutes of May thirteenth, June twelfth, June twenty-fifth, a slew of Dover Sherwin Regional School Committee Minutes, and we've already accumulated some items for the October Dover School Committee Meeting. As we discussed, we may move the enrollment report to the joint. We will have more time to talk about the technology plan supplements. We'll have MCAS results. You must have something about integrated preschool you're going to talk about.
We do, we want, we have, we will have a proposal ready for the school committee to consider beginning an integrated preschool at Chicaring for the fifteen, sixteen school year.
You said this has been discussed before, right?
Yeah, the last two years, when we've done budget, it's come up.
If you're visiting, okay.
And then we are, I think they're bringing forward some update fees for our rentals here.
We'll also have a room temperatures drive-through, and we'll have a timeline for you on transportation contract.
Do that at the joint.
Can do that at the joint.
Can we leave the enrollment on there just in case, is anything specific?
Yeah, I mean, this is just, this is just a, yeah, we definitely can do that. Were there any other items? I don't think that we need any more items, but anyone else? We're on September. Okay. So I'd like to have a motion to, or I'll take a poll to go into an executive session for purposes of discussing school security and shooting minutes of May nineteen. So I'll just do a poll.
Yes.
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 Okay, so that's a little meeting, that'll adjourn. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for everything you do. Thank you all for everything you do.